To call this meet Joint City Council Economic Development Advisory Commission's Special Meeting together to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Jeff, any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes to the order, Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council and of EDAC, any changes you wish to make to the order of the agenda?
Nope.
Since there's very few things on the agenda, there's probably not much call to change the order of it. Greg, report from closed session?
There's no report.
Thank you, Greg. Council Communications and Announcements, it actually says Council Communications and Announcements, but I thought we would also give this as an opportunity if members of EDAC wish to make comments as well. I'm going to start with John down the end and just go around.
Nothing to add.
Matt?
No.
Cameron? Wow, we're on a roll. Ron?
Nope.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have nothing?
Nothing, sir.
Good. Jeff, do you have anything you wish to, any comments you wish to make?
Not this evening.
Okay. And we'll move on to public comment. This is for, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items EDAC, on items not on the agenda. The, I have one card, and that's from David Crabbe, and I apologize that our backs are facing, we don't normally do that, it's not meant as a sign of disrespect, we just set up this room for a different kind of meeting, would you like to, where, Jeff?
Is there a place I'm supposed to stand to be on TV?
Right there on the podium.
At the podium. Thank you, David.
Yes, hi. This is just an announcement to remind you that Sustainable San Mateo County is having their indicators launch tomorrow morning from 11:30 to 1:30. This is the second update of our indicators, and as you know, our key indicator is transportation. And we're going to have two panels, and, oh, it's going to be at the Sam Transmobil across the way here, so it's nice and close, it's free, get free lunch. It's going to have two panels, one which probably most interesting, this group is, called Driving Our Economy, Increasing Prosperity While Decreasing Emissions. They have Roseanne Faust as the moderator, Karen Summer as the Transportation Program Manager, Jeff G. from the mayor of Brooklyn City, and Ken Chin, Program Manager of San Mateo, which is in the Sustainable Streets Project. So, if you can make it, you would need to contact sustainable, sustainable san mateo.org and sign up so we have enough food for you, but we appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council at this time? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item 7A, our study session.
Well, good evening, gentlemen, thank you, thank you all for being here tonight. Just by way of background and introduction, this joint meeting between the city council and EDAC is part of the council's current strategic plan, one of their objectives to gather with EDAC for input and discussion of economic development issues in advance of a update coming in the next four or five months on the economic development plan. EDAC's also expressed an interest in having a session with the council that's a little different from past joint EDAC council meetings, have more of a brainstorming session rather than sort of a formal council meeting with a lot of reports from staff and items, so this meeting will really be driven by you all more so than staff in compared to meetings in the past. There's been a great deal of work done in economic development, but there is definitely an interest that I've heard from many council members, and I know Al has heard from EDAC members, about looking forward and what comes next after some of the projects. We still have a lot of important economic development projects going, Wheeler Plaza, the Landmark Hotel site being probably the two largest well-known projects, we're not looking to necessarily discuss or change those issues tonight, but kind of plan for, you know, what comes next, what gets put on the table. These projects that are being implemented in Wheeler and the hotel were envisioned long by, you know, folks long before any of us were in the room or in the room today. To prep for this meeting, EDAC Chair Josh, Al, myself, Adessa, tried to meet with all the council members to begin to gather ideas for future economic development. EDAC also spent a good deal of time prepping and generating ideas for this meeting. Some of the key takeaways from the discussion is that there's a recognition that we don't want to take away from the current objectives, but a desire to add to the work and look towards the future in terms of our planning. So tonight's not going to be about making any final decisions, council's the final decision-making authority for the economic development plan based on future consideration of the plan that will ultimately be considered and recommended by EDAC to the city council. So tonight we'll be focusing on new ideas and then trying to get some direction on what's important moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Al Savay, to just walk you through a little bit of the preliminaries on how tonight's planned to work.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Chairman, and members of EDAC. So tonight what we have planned is, is we have about two hours, and what we'd like to do is get you out of here by nine o'clock. Of course, if you strongly desire to go past nine, that's up to you. Also, as part of the strategic objectives of the city council, it says that we ought to have more than one meeting, and again, that's up to you. If you feel like at the end of this meeting, you've gotten where you need to go, we will check in with you at the end of this meeting and see if you want to schedule another one, so that's, again, up to you. For the outcome of tonight's meeting, what we'd like to do is focus on a ranked list of priorities, and to help manage the outcome of the meeting, we brought in a gentleman to facilitate the meeting, his name's Frank Topper, to assist us. Frank is a professional facilitator, and he's been with Stanford for more than 20 years. He's also worked with Google and Nvidia and others to make sure that meetings are brief and productive and clear. In preparing for this meeting, just to kind of piggyback on what Jeff said, what we did is we took the notes that we had from the city council individual meetings and also the meetings, lots of the meetings that we had with EDAC that where everybody generated ideas, and we brought all those ideas to the table tonight for all of you to consider and address. And to ensure that we get some measurable outcomes for tonight, we're going to ask you to look these over and select the top ideas. And Frank has a unique way of doing this, and without further ado, I'm going to bring forward Frank Topper. Frank?
Thank you, Al. Hello, everyone.
Hello, Frank.
Hello. So let's first take a quick look at the agenda. Here's the plan. First of all, I've got a couple of ground rules, and this is to make sure I hear you, so it's one person speaking at a time, probably you do that anyway. I'm going to capture, if you have new ideas or you want to change ideas, I'm going to capture them, put them right on the screen, so make sure you're happy with the words I put up there. I'll get as close as I can. If we get into storytelling or war stories, I may interrupt and say, have, you know, Mark, have we captured your idea? But anybody can tell me to chill out, because someone may say, or Vaidim may say, you know, Frank, that's actually a hot topic, we need to spend a couple more minutes on it. So that's sort of the broad ground rules. What we'll come to is we have to figure out how are we going to choose from these 57 ideas or any other new ones you put in? So we want to develop some criteria. Then once we do, we're going to select the top ideas and use this little handy polling device, we'll do a little test, just like America's Funniest Home Videos or Who Wants to be a Millionaire? This is very helpful for seeing where people stand, it's anonymous polling, it's quick. So we'll rate those ideas, we'll add any new ideas, just make sure we didn't miss anything from all the documents, the EDAC meeting, the council interviews that have come together, and then we'll see if we can select the top ideas and see what time that is and how it feels for, are we in consensus, or do we have enough for the city council to decide from? So that's our plan. Sound okay? All right. So let's start with, let's take your keypad, we're going to do one test vote, just so you can see where we're going to be going. So, the statement here is, I'm an above-average driver, so we're talking about you. If you strongly agreed with that statement, you'd press five on your keypad. If you agreed, you'd press four, three, sort of, two, disagree, or one, strongly disagree. So I'm going to press five, because I am an above-average driver, and I just press and release, and a little green light goes off in the keypad, that means your vote's been recorded. If it blinks or turns red or anything else, then I need to give you a better keypad, but I just did all the batteries, it should be good. So everybody right now, press a button from one to five, am I above, I am an above-average driver, just your agreement with that statement.
The green light doesn't stay on, correct? It just flashes?
Right, it just goes green and off. So what we see for this group, and I voted on this one, this is how you feel you are as above-average drivers. Now, we're going to go through these ideas.
Can you adjust the screen for you guys a little bit?
Maybe a little.
Yeah, slightly off the screen then. Yeah, there you go. Now, we're not recording this for the police department, and you're not going to be tailed afterwards, but.
So, that's how it works, and we'll run through all these ideas, but first, if we're going to pick all these different ideas, and you have the list in front of you, and we're going to go one by one and rate them, the question is, how are we going to select these ideas? So we had a couple discussions, and it looks like if you strongly agreed with an idea that it probably would meet some of these criteria, it raises revenue for the general fund, it may be feasible, sustainable, somehow leaves a legacy going forward, or aligns with the mission and goals of EDAC and of the city. So looking at those for a second, do those seem like the right criteria for agreeing with these ideas or disagreeing? Or is anything missing, or you'd like to see for us to consider? Keith?
One item, when I look up there, I see the immediacy element as far as economics go, does it raise revenue? But it seems to me that the long-term value from a strategic approach is perhaps a little bit embedded in aligned mission and goals, I'd like to call that out, because positioning may in itself, may in itself have value.
So we just put, this one includes long-term value?
Long-term strategic value.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Okay. Keith?
Two things, one is, I wonder whether or not for things like increasing employment shouldn't be a factor, and I'm, also have a question, I don't understand what leaves a legacy means, I'm not sure what the word legacy means in that context.
Okay.
I think, perhaps I can help with that. I mean, it's like, if you were to think in the future as a council member or an EDAC member, a great project for the community that you feel proud of being part of, and does it benefit the community to the, to the degree that you would feel proud to be a part of it?
Okay.
So, that's good. Any other criteria come to mind, or does that look like a pretty good? Please. Matt?
I would think we'd want something about improving or maintaining, or wherever you want to use, quality of life.
Thank you. Please.
Maybe as a drill down on the feasibility, I think having some tactical impact, that we can actually make a difference in a reasonable timeframe.
Okay, this looked like a pretty good collection to start with. So let's go to polling, so because there's so many, I may not be able to get them all in, but let's, let's see, so we've got raised revenue, we've got, I'll just put life quality, we've got aligned with mission, let's see. Yeah, they won't all fit in. So this will include employment, quality of life, and those we just mentioned. Is that okay? All right. So let's take your keypads, because we're going to do some, we're going to vote 57 ideas in a row, and then we're going to add any other idea you wish, or we'll reword an idea and change it and throw another one in.
Question?
Please.
Industrial arts design slash construction, just wanted to make sure I understand what that is.
Sure thing.
The industrial arts zone is the area around where Tesla used to be, kind of A1 lumber area where we have, we actually rezoned it as a city to a place called Industrial Arts Zone, and it's sort of the artisanal industrial arts uses in our community, you have plumbers, glass people, ironworkers, tile, you could pretty much, if you went there, you could probably design your whole house from the industrial arts zone. And EDAC has discussed this zone as a place to celebrate it and make it more distinct, so that it becomes more of a regional draw. Right now, maybe contractors and architects and maybe some folks in the community know about the area, and their contractors probably buy a lot of things in the industrial arts zone, but the average San Carlin or even people in Fremont, for instance, who we would like to shop here, they may not know that we're, we have a really good synergy of these types of uses. So EDAC has talked about, well, how do we, how do we make that more distinct and maybe advertise that, and maybe make it a better place or a cooler place for people to come?
That was perfect, Mark, actually, because when we put one up and I read it, if you have any question or it doesn't make sense, then just shout it out and we'll get a perspective. So, what's your agreement with this as a potential goal? Five, you love it, strongly agree, down to one, strongly disagree, bad idea, or anywhere in between? If you have no opinion, you don't have to press a button, but I'll reckon, just about everybody here on EDAC and the council will have an opinion. And your control is in the keypad, will turn green and go off when you vote, because no one knows who's voting on any of these. So everyone's pressed? Incentives for businesses to locate here. Branding and marketing to the next level, better use. Attract businesses to match local and regional skills. Focus on moving east side industrial business usage to knowledge-based economy and jobs.
Can we slow down on that one? I want to read that again.
Are we getting nine votes?
Getting eight.
That's what it looks like to me, too.
Do we have, I thought we had eight, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we have nine, okay. Should we, oh, there we go.
Nine on this one, but it seemed like the last one only had eight.
Right, I counted eight.
You might be turning it over a little fast on us.
Okay. Why don't we do those again?
Well, if you don't have nine, maybe you might win.
Well, now we have nine, I missed, I missed that we had nine before. Should we redo them?
Sure. I think we also said if you didn't need to, if you didn't feel compelled to vote, you didn't have to.
But that one, you got eight.
We have a choice, we can quickly redo them. Now, we're okay? Okay, I'm going to take that as okay for the moment. And I will slow down to make sure. So attract, the Palo Alto Medical Foundation Restaurants Needed for PAMP Users and Employees.
So if I recall from EDAC discussions, I don't know that this is necessarily centered around restaurants, but the notion was with PAMP going up on, in that part of town, is there something that can be done to support peripery businesses, right? So restaurants or the services that folks in that neighborhood might, might now need. I don't know if we want to, if we feel strongly about changing it from restaurants, restaurant seems awfully specific.
Maybe change it to general businesses and services?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, let's rate this one, and I will change it after, to general businesses and services, was that the idea?
And sonarists.
Revo. Yeah, so if you press, and you press again, it takes the last one you press, as long as it says pre-vote, please vote now. So, whoop, you had a five and you meant a four, there you go, okay. Broker relations is important, proactive and handholding.
Can you explain that?
Do you want to try to explain?
Good evening, Adessa Peddell, Economic Development Coordinator. This discussion came from one of the one-on-one meetings with council member, one of the council members thought it was really important to have continued relationship with brokers. It is part of our current economic development plan, and we are doing it, but again, that certain council member reiterated the fact that it is extremely important to continue that. Thank you.
Last chance. Thank you. Proactive and change processes that are hindrance to economic development.
And was it specifically to city-based processes? Planning, zoning, funding?
Who does this relate to?
Business practices of the city.
Of the city.
Do you want to take that? Okay.
Oh.
Just a quick statement, so I think as we run through all 57 or whatever these, you're going to, we'll find that they're at different levels. So this list was meant to be pretty comprehensive and then shortened for this format. So I guess just something to keep in mind, some of these things are not necessarily changes to the way we're currently thinking about economic development, is that a fair statement, Adessa?
That's fine.
No? Okay.
Okay. Nine, developing an updated mission statement.
For EDAC or specifically for EDAC?
For the economic development plan. Yeah.
Ten, what kind of strategies should we support for incubators? What should we focus upon?
Not sure how would, how would agree/disagree?
Question.
Thing ties to that question.
So I think on this one, eliminate the question marks, and it's, is, is a notion of...
Should we have a strategy to support incubators?
Exactly. And, yeah.
All right. Should we focus on that?
All right.
Good. So this is create a strategy for incubators? Okay.
We only have eight people voting.
Thank you.
Inconsistently, we've had eight. It's like somebody's not participating.
Eleven, cities involvement post-RDA, can we give incentives to businesses?
And again, we'd map that to, we should give incentives to businesses, right?
Okay. So that's we should give incentives to businesses, what's your agreement?
Which actually in this case is the same as number two.
It's all right, see if the votes are the same.
We'll see how close we match, Josh. Anyone else on this one? Everyone pressed who wants to? Okay, that control is in your keypad. Twelve, we should not lose sight of economic development.
Don't quite understand what's actionable on this one.
All EDAC members who vote one, please see me afterwards.
I was thinking the same thing.
We took all the notes and anything that even looked like a possible idea, we put in just to start the brainstorming.
That's okay.
Okay. And last chance? Thank you. Link, thirteen, link the job creation to workforce housing creation, job and housing Outreach to businesses, are you planning to move? Fifteen, connecting with new startup companies. Sixteen, building materials, we need to keep our machine shops so they will not go away. And all in? Seventeen, ask the applicants, how was the development process? Have personal conversations with people, much like an exit interview process. Agreement level?
And these are applicants to which process or activity?
Building permits, planning and building, yeah.
Eighteen, find ways to interact with Stanford, San Carlos to be connected to educational opportunities.
Would it be possible to propose that, nothing against Stanford, that we basically look at the second sentence and not the first of that one? In other words, that it's really to be connected to educational opportunities, not just Stanford?
Is that okay with everyone? Because I can always do a second.
Yeah, I think that gets at the heart of what the idea was, that's good.
Okay. We will strike Stanford. Nineteen, we should utilize local promoters such as car collectors to events location to draw people into the city. And anyone else? Thank you. Twenty, branding of our industrial area, for example, renaming the industrial RD or design standards for the industrial area, industrial road. Twenty-one, look at the outside of city for ideas, use best practices. Twenty-two, uniform field in sidewalk landscaping and structural designs. Twenty-three, so now we're in a new grouping downtown, beautification of Laurel Street.
Josh, can I get a clarification, there have been versions of Laurel Street and then specifically South Laurel, are those separated in here, is it considered? They are separated. So would this one be interpreted as all of Laurel Street, or specifically the area not considered part of South Laurel?
You will see in the next line, number 24, talks about encourage more South Laurel Development and Services, so South Laurel is spelled out.
Okay. So could we perhaps change this one to beautification of Laurel Street not included or exclusive of South Laurel area? I mean, I somehow pointed to the idea that is not South Laurel.
Perhaps the historic core?
Yeah, sure.
Historic core of downtown?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So we're going to say beautification of historic quarter?
Core, C-O-R-E, like historic retail area, core.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And anyone else on this one? Thank you. Twenty-four, encourage more South Laurel Development and Services. Twenty-six, facade storefront improvement program to be renewed again. Twenty-seven, lighting the Laurel Street, the details are add positives.
What is that? What does that mean? We are lighting Laurel Street, aren't we? I'm not sure what's that meaning at.
Was that the, again, was that the extension past the core area, Josh, or is that taking...
I think it probably was.
Going down, so this was the idea of past, the... Going down, so this was the idea of past the central area of Laurel Street and adding lighting to those locations, not in the prime blocks?
That okay? And last chance? Thank you. Twenty-eight, El Camino and southern part of Laurel needs attention and plan. Twenty-nine, Laurel Street on the south side will need the same services as the north side with more development. Parking. Thirty, PBID would help with beautification efforts.
PBID?
Peanut butter and...
Identification.
That is the same format as Business Improvement District. It's called Property-Based Improvement District. So this is the same format as Business Improvement District, basically.
So this would be owner-funded?
Yes, property-owner-funded.
And anyone else? Thank you. Thirty-one, PAMF employees will need a shuttle from Laurel to PAMF. And last chance? Thank you. Thirty-two, need new events for downtown San Carlos businesses, such as block parties to promote restaurants. Thirty-three, so this is another section called catalyst. Development along El Camino Real, the next catalyst sites. Conduct a study to determine appropriate locations.
Is there any specificity as to what kind of development? Or is it just different than what we have there?
It would be something that would conform to our general plan and zoning, but just different than what's existing. So newer buildings, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on this one? Thirty-four, incubator hub for new businesses. Last chance? Thank you. Office-based long-term turnover of east side uses.
I don't understand what that means.
So I think the intention for this one was that, as you think about the potential for moving from service-based to knowledge-based on the east side, is it a priority to find a way to be a catalyst for office space over there?
So just bypass?
Yeah, exactly. So is, is it, would it be a priority to think about, you know, if, is office, is creating additional Class A, B, C office space a priority? And would that be a good use of...
Got it.
Okay. Thank you. Thirty-six, identification of new citywide catalyst projects. And all in? Thirty-seven, secondary restaurant district to support businesses. Thirty-eight, housing for employees. Thirty-nine, we got... Forty, big part of the plan should be the future of the east side. Forty-one, attraction of large companies by aggregating properties to be analyzed. Forty-two, early facilitation needed between neighbors and businesses to reduce friction. Forty-three, development, develop employment opportunities locally. Forty-four, east side in the next ten to fifteen years will evolve. Forty-five, being proactive with east side to assist with development. Now we have a new category, natural and resources. Forty-six, resource conservation production alternatives, such as energy, water and food.
Does that mean in the context of encouraging economic development that addresses those opportunities or... Okay.
Thank you. And last chance? Thank you. Forty-seven, identify business needs in event of a disaster. Forty-eight, incentives for businesses to conserve resources. Branding. Forty-nine, incentives for property owners to conserve resources. Branding. Fifty, construction of a training center for job sustainable construction practices. Fifty-one, incentivize behavior rather than mandate. And last chance? Thank you. Fifty-two, this, the last segment is called transportation. Pedestrian, improve pedestrian path to Caltrain and downtown from east side businesses. Fifty-three, shuttles, research business managed TDM shuttle system. Transportation and Circulate, Circulation Commission. Fifty-four, circulation. Circulation improvements, Holly Street. City access improvements, traffic study to determine creative alternatives, smaller shuttles, alternative access routes, TNC involved. Fifty-five, bike, need for a bike share program. Fifty-six, connectivity to the city from other regions, getting workers into the city transportation network. And car parking structure with traffic direction from El Camino with shuttle service, Caltrain parking businesses, maybe Sequoia Station. All right, way to go. So we just rated fifty-seven ideas, but before we really look at them, did anybody come here with an additional idea or did another idea come to mind that's not on this list? This is a great chance to get it up here and get perspective.
I'll throw out one that, I'm not exactly sure how to describe it. I have, I have wanted to see if there was a way that we could provide some kind of improved transit connectivity between some of the outlined parts of San Carlos and the downtown mass transit core. I have no idea what form that would take. Used to be buses a long time ago, but there weren't a lot of them.
You mean primarily residential?
Yes, I mean, because the, the remote areas are, I don't think we have any remote commercial areas.
Well, it depends on your definition of remote.
Yeah, I meant off of the, off of the El Camino access, backup vehicles.
Okay, we'll add that one. Please.
See it in here, but I would like to see something along the lines of more rental housing closer to the transportation corridor. She could say development of more rental housing close to the, close to transit.
So, develop more...
Development of more rental housing close to transportation. You could actually say even along El Camino.
Great, makes it clearer. Other ideas? Okay. Let's rate these, and even as we go along, if another one comes to mind, we can just toss it in there. So let's do this one. A way we could provide some kind of transit between outlined parts of San Carlos and downtown Transit Core, there were buses a long time ago, primarily residential, provide off El Camino access. Five, strongly agree, down to one. And then this one, oh no, we didn't do that one. Development of more rental housing close to transportation along El Camino. And anyone else? Thank you. All right, so this is just a quick, putting them in higher rated order.
Can I, before we move on from the new ideas, throw out there something for the group to consider if you'd like to put up there? This is more brainstorming session, but what I don't see up there would be a question about whether or not it's a priority to continue setting aside available funding for future property acquisition, economic development, property acquisition.
Okay.
I have no problem responding to that. I, I, for what it's worth, I tend to view that as how do we finance what we decide to do? It's because it's a way of financing how we decide to do it.
Shall we rate that one? Easy. So continue setting aside available funding for future economic development property acquisition. Oh, that was fast. Okay. Thank you. Any others? So we have twenty-eight, El Camino, southern part of Laurel, need attention and plan, more South Laurel Development and Services. Big part of the plan, future of east side. Find ways to interact with higher ed, educational opportunities. Circulation improvements. Keep looking at economic development. At the least amount of agreement, we have this list, and rather than just read them all to you, if you take a look at this list, are there any you want to stand up and say, we need to talk about that one, that should be higher rated? So maybe Ron says, you know, we really need to do more downtown San Carlo business block party. So he'll give his spiel, people can comment, and then we can re-rate it. So this is a chance, if you see any favorites up there, give them some attention and try to raise them up.
So if you don't mind, I'll bring up the one about job training for sustainable construction practices. I just think that because we've become, you know, we've got, part of our brand is the construction-related industries. And as we, you know, struggle as an economy to bring in, to be able to employ our young people, even ones with fine degrees coming out of college, who are, you know, for better or worse, making sandwiches at, you know, at some of the local delis, that's a whole field that's going to continue to evolve and grow as resources become tighter and so forth. So why not piggyback on, why not take advantage of the expertise we have in this area, both from a technology standpoint as well as a construction standpoint? You know, there's been some talk in the past, in fact, when I was interviewing for the EDEC role with regards to Centers of Educational Excellence. And this is a, this is a space that's, you know, it's not going to go away, and we have an opportunity to define it and really carry on some of the legacy of San Carlos's, you know, the, the origin of Silicon Valley by creating a, an environment where people will be creating best practices, new materials, et cetera, that are going to be used in building construction or whatever it might be. That's a space I think is really important, so to that purpose, I'd like to raise my hand on that one. I think that, you know, if we, if we speak to this more, more collaboratively and we, and we spend some time on this subject, I think we'd find a lot of common ground and be able to, you know, surface this as an important, a very important topic. You know, we have local, local resources here educationally as well as from a technology standpoint and material standpoint. I've had conversations with some of the, the science leadership up at Kenyatta College. I've spoken at length with Felicity Tallman, who runs the green section of the Wall Street Journal. These are areas that we're just really not, nobody's spending a lot of time on, and I just think it would be appropriate for us to, to grab that mantle back. You know, Silicon Valley started here with the, the Littens, the GT Lenkerts and so forth. Why not get back in the saddle and, and make it happen in the, in the construction industry and the sustainable materials industry? Go ahead.
So John, question, because I, and I remember this discussion from one of the EDEC meetings, and I think we kind of bifurcated the conversation, so I want to make sure I have the right view of it here. One of the elements said that this is more of a vocational training element for people who want to enter that business. The other element, the other side of it said, this is an awareness and educational program for businesses that are there to get their, get more knowledge about their products and services. So do you see this as being a combination or as being more weighted toward preparing workers into that field versus preparing for increase of sales and services from groups already participating?
Well, not, not to be sargue, but yes is the answer.
Yeah, sure.
Just the balance is, is what's in question here. I mean, it could be completely dedicated to the scientific side of things and training contractors and those at the management level of these businesses, A, how to incorporate this in their businesses, or B, start their own businesses in that, in that exact space. I mean, right now, it's, let's say you're going to do solar. You've got a number, any number of solar companies out there, but the roofing companies could easily adapt and morph into that space, create more scale, make it less expensive for people to incorporate those into their, their remodeling plans, things like that. It may need to be vocational. There are, you know, there are a lot of folks here that, you know, frankly, it's difficult for them to find employment if they don't have a degree, period, to live here.
Sure.
You know, paying nineteen hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment in Britain up on Rawson, it looks no better than a, than a dorm room at college. I went to Chico State, but you know, Stanford may be different. But I think that we are not, if we, if we don't serve in, if we don't take kind of an enlightened role in that, it's maybe quasi-vocational space, in these type of jobs, other people will, and our, our workforce will be left behind.
So if, if this were reworded, would it be something more along the lines of leverage our expertise in this field to, A, provide workforce opportunities and, B, enhance sales of existing businesses? of existing businesses?
Well, let's try it. So why don't we make it two items? So leverage our expertise in construction area for vocational training?
Mm-hmm.
Let's have that be an item.
Okay. By our, you mean community, correct?
Yes, right. And I'm going with the premise that we have a level of expertise in that arts and artisanal district.
And the next one would be level our construction expertise to teach businesses how to do more with sustainability? What would be?
Well.
We had training for the first one.
Best practices and training for business owners in the construction industries for adapting to, adapting to sustainable materials and energy, or I like to call it environmentally intelligent construction.
So what we can do is leave the one we had, and let's rate these two. So this one says leverage our expertise in construction area for vocational training. What's your agreement with that as a priority?
So does that mean we're trying to attract an outside source that would come into San Carlos and provide this kind of thing?
Possibly.
Is that what you're looking at? I mean, are you looking at the city? Who's?
We could partner with those out in the world that would provide that kind of training. I wouldn't say the city itself would create that training center, although that's possible, but I think in this day and age, it'd probably be smarter to partner with somebody in that space.
I know it's challenging not to move to like how we can execute on any of these things. I think from an EDAC perspective, it's helpful to know is, is this an area, right? So this supporting vocational training, is that a priority as we think about economic development? And then either EDAC or, you know, we sort of figure out the next step, which would be, do we do it ourselves? Do we partner? Is somebody already interested? I think it's just sort of taking that first step to say, is this, is this one of the top things that our group and the council, as you think about economic development, should be focused on?
Thank you. Anyone else on this one? Okay. And then this one is, let's see. Leverage our construction expertise and best practice training, training so that we can train business owners, adapt to sustainable materials and environmentally intelligent construction. I'm going to go back to this lower rated one. So vocational training ended up right in the middle. Looking at these others, anything stand out as something you would like to comment on?
Actually, not so much comment on it. I'd be interested in if there's a way to look at, we sort of have a couple of, we have two, employment-wise, two opposing themes here. One is construction slash whatever, building trades. The other is knowledge work. There were a whole bunch of questions about knowledge economy and economy of the future and whatnot. I'd almost be interested in seeing, was there a difference in perspective of which one of those we wanted to focus on, or we wanted to focus on both, or what?
Maybe we could put that in as an item, call it, we should focus on.
Actually, I mean, you can if you want, and I don't know if your system allows you to do it, but it would be, to me, it would be just looking at how we answered some of the questions that are here.
We could look at the spread. So this is where there's the biggest disagreement in the room.
Mark, I think what you're trying to say is there a way to look at the results to say, is it, are there more favorable responses to the building materials stuff and continue to support it, or for some of the knowledge base, hey, how do we transition away from industrial into that?
Right, that's exactly what I'm trying to get at. I just was curious about how, and, you know, the nature of these types of discussions is sometimes it's, you want to do everything, and that's okay. I'm just curious what the result was.
So a question like, the future of the East Side economy is knowledge-based, the future of the East Side economy is construction industry-based.
If you wanted to reduce it to two questions, that's how you would do it.
I wanted to key on one of the things that's on the low end of the scale there. The, where is it? Uniform feel and sidewalk landscaping and structural designs. I think that's something that's important, but the way it's worded, that idea of uniform, I think is off-putting to a lot of people. But I think having some, you know, if we go to the East Side now, and we think about, you know, one of the things up there was, is it going to evolve? And I think most of us agreed it's going to evolve. But if you don't, if you don't have any kind of standards, the fear, you know, I'm kind of speaking as somebody who's in the design trade of buildings and so forth, if you don't have any kind of standards, you end up with what you have now, Quonset hut buildings and buildings that look like they're falling over, and owners aren't really taking care of them, and things like that. And when people put things in, you don't want to constrain a designer necessarily so that everything looks the same, but on the other hand, you want to have some kind of standards so that you don't get more garbage built over there. And so, you know, that's a, it's kind of a balancing act of how to bring things up to a new level of design without squashing.
Good question, Matt. Al, from a design standard perspective, I would imagine there are some rules in place or guidelines in place for Laurel, but do they extend citywide into each of those zones on the East Side?
No, not necessarily. For instance, the city council did adopt standards for El Camino, so that the council was presented with some special design standards for El Camino, and they were adopted. When East Side Connect came through, there's the same standard, and there are some crossover ideas that, you know, go across from El Camino to the East Side Connect, but not exactly the same. The city also, from a public work standpoint, has some design standards in terms of widths and things like that, but it doesn't say you have to have this color or a sidewalk or this, this material here. We do have tree standards, we do have a light standard for residential for some places. So yeah, I would say that, you know, from a public work standpoint, we do. And then finally, from an architectural design standpoint, in our zoning code, we have lots of design guidelines now. When we redid our code, we kind of said, you know, here's the form and shape of things, but we didn't go down to the, you know, detail, ultimate detail, because as Councilman Grokha said, you don't want to overstep your boundaries with design.
So would it be safer, Al, to say that this particular point as displayed up there would have one implication, if you're talking the city at large, where we have some form of standards or plans in place, but if you were to look at the microcosm of East Side in general, it would be a potentially very different answer?
Right.
We don't have those same things as we do with the rest of the city.
Right. I mean, we've, again, we've kind of evolved over the years, like industrial was, there was a design standard used for that when it was upgraded, then there was maybe a newer, better design standard that was used for East Side Connect project. So, right, we don't have one single design standard that you would apply. You might key off of the newest one and do that if you wanted to.
So then would it make sense, and I think I might have seen some typing going on back there, does it make sense to create a specific version of that question for the East Side? Because there were several other East Side questions, as there were with South Laurel questions out there.
This is what I tried to do, if I'm connecting right with what the comment, design standards or guidelines for sidewalks, landscape, structural design for East Side. Is that?
I would change structural to building.
Yeah, because I don't read the original question the same way that you read it, Matt. I read it totally different.
What's that?
I read it to mean sidewalks, landscaping, and design for things like city infrastructure, you know, streetlight poles, stoplights, you know, when you go to Daly City, everything's painted blue, that type of public infrastructure look and feel, as opposed to privately-owned buildings, which I think is, you know, this question speaks more, creating now speaks more to that. And I'm not sure if that's clear to everybody.
Jeff, I think, if I remember correctly, the discussion's probably started around Laurel and like beautification there, and should there be a standard when it comes to landscaping or lighting exactly? And I think it probably morphed into, hey, and if you were going to do something along El Camino or other sort of developmental in the core, but I think it's a really good question to say, if there's going to be, if we foresee change on the East Side, is it applicable there too? Yeah.
Yeah, because this was one of the questions where the result actually surprised me, and maybe it's an interpretation of the question, because I felt like it was a question that we had a lot of comment from a lot of different people in the meetings I was in, where it was sort of a reoccurring theme, and then it's been voted very low.
Well, I think there was a second question or statement, something about beautification. And I don't know, in my mind, I was sort of saying, well, we'll vote for both of them, because I think in my head, they seem the same.
When I looked at it, I saw uniform, and I thought continuity. There's a continuity throughout the city, so you know you're in San Carlos, and it changes. You know you're not anymore. That's how I saw it. I believe that that's what was meant, if I'm not mistaken.
Would we like to rate this one related to the East Side, design standards and guidelines?
Sure.
And then we'll see what you'd like to do with the other ones?
Matt, would you be fine if we eliminated East Side and if this is applicable at a higher level, or do you think it's important to keep it just as East Side?
It's fine with me to eliminate East Side.
I actually liked having East Side specifically in there.
I could do two. You want two?
Can you, where is the question about Laurel beautification?
This one right here, 23, it was right in the middle. Well, since someone likes East Side, let's do this with East Side in, and then we'll add any way you would like. So, design standards, guidelines, or building design and such for the East Side. Is this a priority, given general fund, quality of life, employment, that set of criteria? So we have the, if we want to talk about it, the beautification of Laurel Street and this uniform feel.
Can I ask a kind of a process question? So it looks like we're at about halfway through, and so what's kind of the rest of the process for the remainder of the meeting?
The intent of this is to make sure everybody's, for the next, whatever time it takes, that if you see a project there that you have a feeling about, or you think for the community or revenue should be rated higher, this is a chance to put out your comment.
And I guess then, okay, so then for Al and for Josh and others, so what do you see coming out of this? Do you draw a line and you say, you know, that's the economic development plan, or? And I guess my larger observation is, you know, having been on EDAC for a few years and now, you know, on the council, for some reason with economic development, it always feels like we're starting from scratch. You know, it's the same list that we went through, painstaking process, and reprioritized, and I just, I have a, you know, I'm worried that I'm going to be back here two years voting on facade improvements again, and then, and again, and again, and again. And so what I'm wondering is, how do we become more of a learning organization where we're having a larger point of view, rather than, you know, continuing to draw what are all worthy ideas? I just don't, I honestly, you know, I'm not an economic development professional, and I don't know which are the right ones. And so it's somewhat arbitrary. I have a perspective. And I worry that many of my colleagues also, while they're all smart folks, don't have, you know, the domain expertise to know what's going to have the biggest impact for the city, this one versus this one. And I worry that a process by which we list and we try to synthesize, you know, opinions which are, you know, maybe not complete, I mean, I would much rather be living in a world where, you know, the domain experts were coming and saying, here's how we see the world, here's how we see we're positioned, here's where we see the biggest opportunities, you know, what do you guys think? I just, I worry that this bottoms-up approach and the fact that we're continuing to see the same, you know, list year after year after year, I'm just not sure that it gets us to the place we need to be.
You know, I actually agree with almost all of that. Cameron, what I was thinking earlier, and this may not be exactly what you.
And Mark, I'm going to interrupt you just for a second. We've been told we need to speak a little more into the microphone to capture this.
Project.
Thank you.
The thought that occurred to me is, there's a funny old saying that, you know, an elephant is a mouse built by committee, and sometimes when you do things from a bottom up, that's what ends up happening. So I too wouldn't mind seeing, as you called it, domain expertise kind of brought into play here. On the other hand, at least for me, when I look at that list on what's up at the high end, one of the things that I see, that I know I've talked to staff about a lot, but I didn't sense that the rest of the council, let alone EDAC, may have felt the same way, is there's an awful lot of talking about, we need to do more on the south end of Laurel Street. If you look at the number one, number two, about number seven or eight, that's a bit of an eye-opener to me. It may be an eye-opener, it's a little bit of a, oh, that's interesting. So there may be some value pulling out lessons like that.
That particular point was one that I know that we discussed somewhat at length in the EDAC sessions. And we drew this distinction quite a bit on, is Laurel really the main three blocks, or is it an extended region? The idea behind it was that we have eight, 10, 12, 14 blocks worth of resource, many of which are in a sustaining mode, and it would be nice to invest in them, but the reality is probably that they're going to sustain themselves to some operational degree in some relatively secure manner, for the near term at least, but there are other areas that are probably going to need a nudge to get to a higher degree of, or get closer to their potential. That's where we leveraged the conversation in the EDAC meeting across and said, and if we look across the tracks, at the East Side, you have similar issues. You've got really two problems. One is that the area itself is lacking a core identity, and we're lacking accessibility in and out, which is why we ended up coming out of this with the idea of the circulation and transit path. So Cameron, to your point about some of the larger ideas, I think many of them were bundled in one form about how do we create value, or how do we create the potential for value in areas where it might not naturally occur, and how do we distribute those efforts to as many pockets of the city as possible, rather than necessarily concentrating on things that have had a history of perhaps already getting attention? So yes, the facade improvement program was there, but it wasn't seen as being necessarily the place we'd want to go.
Sure. I mean, maybe I'll just make even the higher level point, which is, you know, a couple of years ago, we spent, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to do research, we got a software, we did Buxton on this idea that we were going to go out and attract a bunch of businesses, we made a list of those businesses, which took up a lot of time, and then we never called them. And then, you know, we, now we've got, and then we winnowed down the list to a very specific list of things that we were going to go after. Not really clear what we did, what that list was. You know, we're essentially, the nine of us here, setting a priority for like two staff people and a relatively limited budget. And then we've got, in addition to this, we've got $30,000 appropriated for a consultant to help write us an additional economic development plan above and beyond what we're saying. So I just, I'm just not sure how all the pieces fit together and how, you know, I want to help be productive, and I want to help, you know, help the process as best I can. And I'm just trying to understand, how do I do that?
Let me jump in here for just a second. It was the desire of both the city council and EDAC to have sort of a brainstorming session.
Sure.
And a more dynamic joint meeting than what we've seen in the past, which is, we have these joint meetings, and, you know, we kind of have a presentation, and everybody asks a question or two. asks a question or two, and maybe a few people make comments, and we adjourn the meeting, and we really haven't learned a whole lot, or had a lot of meaningful dialogue. So, what we're looking at right now is the beginning of a process that's going to start with these priorities. And then what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be reaching out to experts, including the staff, to start to explore some of these ideas, because we don't have a lot of answers for you tonight. I can't tell you how much it's going to, these things are going to cost, or what the likely timeline is, or how much staff resource is going to be committed to making one or all of these things happen. And of course, those are going to be critical to the city council before they ever, you know, wave their magic wand and cast their vote, and start to actually allocate resources and allow staff to design programs and projects to put these things into place. So, those things will happen, but we thought, given the feedback and desire of both EDAC and the council, we would begin with this sort of free-for-all. So, again, if there are ideas that anybody's got that aren't on this list, or there's things that need to be reworded or discussed, then, you know, by all means, this is the forum to do that. And of course, you know, we can, we can do this again if we can't get through it all tonight, or you want additional time to, you know, digest some of this, think about it. Let's not rush ourselves as we move through the process. Does that help at all?
Yeah, I mean, if, and that's a good context, if the design is just to be messy, just get a bunch of stuff on the table, then that's fine. I guess just my larger request is that, you know, what are we on a two-year economic plan, plan cycle? Is it like, it'd be great then, in two years, we come back and we kick it off with, here's what we've done, here's our point of view, here's what worked, here's what didn't work, you know? So, we have a sense of, you know, we're not, we're not, it doesn't feel like we're starting from scratch, you know?
Well, I could add a perspective, not a historical one, as a new member, but the topic of expertise has come up now a couple of times, and I think that that's fair enough. And what I would just like, actually direct to the front, this is a list that has some implicit clusters, it has some implicit conflicts, right now, we just have a ranking of preference and interest. Is there any way to go through this and actually, A, facilitate a rating, saying that really matters to me, or it doesn't, and B, here are items I would like to see clustered, because that would get us a little bit towards that expertise direction, where we know what's strongly believed in, what really matters, and while that will be cheaper than spending $30,000 on yet another consultant, being one, now that isn't always money well spent, I sort of share that worry a little bit, that we have a very long laundry list of items, and we have some high-ranking items, like asking a free, or do you want free ice cream? I mean, we'd get a five-star vote on this every single time. So, I think, so getting to the next level, just in terms of methodology, is that actually feasible to introduce a rating, saying that that is really, we all agree, but it's not really relevant, and we can move on from this?
So, there's a couple ideas on the table. Let's take this idea that some of these overlap, or they're very similar, like Laurel Street, or east side, or however you see those. If we can look down this list and select those themes, and just pick one idea per theme, and we'll note the theme, I could then take that set of ideas, and then you can compare them to each other, which one's more important? Is this one more important, or is that one more important? So, we can force a ranking, that's one thing we could do. And I'm guessing in that forced ranking, that would be, wow, this one, for instance, South Laurel Development and Services, is that more important, or ask applicants, how was the development process? Which one's more important?
Can I jump in here?
Please.
This is the kind of thing that I would, the way I look at this is a little bit like when I meet with my clients, and I do what I call a, kind of a development meeting to, a program meeting, I call it, to program the design at the beginning. And you just, I just ask them all kinds of questions, and I take in all kinds of information, and then I go back and I draw up the first plan, with the understanding that I either hit it out of the park, or I don't even get on first base, and either one's okay. But when I come in with the next, when I come in with that first design, at that first step of the process, you've got something to talk over. So, you've kind of separated out some of the information, and from, you know, my perspective, I tried to put down the priorities that I think I'm hearing from the client. So, what I'm saying here is, what I think is necessary is, I appreciate Cameron's concern, we don't want to be doing the same thing again, two years from now, with the same list, but I see a start of a process, and this, to me, goes to the staff, they munch through it, and they, you know, separate the wheat from chaff, and, and, you know, for instance, one of the things I see from this list already, in some of the higher priority areas, there are things that staff can just pull out of there and say, okay, outreach to businesses that are planning to move, done. It's off the list. It's no longer up there, because they can just say, yeah, we can do this tomorrow, or within a week. So, I would say, give this to them, let them work it out, and let's have another meeting. And, you know, even if we have to have another meeting like this in I don't know how many months, let's do it. I have one other item I'd like to add to the list, by the way, but I'll let this conversation end first.
Cameron, you started this with a question that said, you know, what do we want to get out of this?
Yeah.
The intention was, if I can, bend this a minute on this, the intention was, touch base with all the council members, understand what's on your mind, right?
Right.
Come to EDAC, understand what's on our mind, put the list together, and categorize it. What I was hoping that we would do is check off tonight on the categories, so I didn't, it's fine that we've run through all 57 of these ideas, and there are sort of multiples of each of them, but I feel that, Matt, where, what you were just talking about is exactly what I wanted to get out of this. Are these categories right? And are there some hot topics underneath of them that need to go, be explored a little bit more? And then come back to the council and say, all right, with the feedback that we've gotten from council and EDAC, and small businesses, and this first working session, here's a, here's a good draft of where we think we ought to go. And maybe that's the point where we can check off with, there's a consultant that the city has hired, that has that sort of expertise, that can say, you know what, you've got office space on here, but St. Carlos, you're never going to get that, or that's just a lazy example. But in my mind, that's what I was hoping for, is that we get, sign out, a sort of agreement on priorities, and understand if there are 10 or 15, like, you know, we really want to learn more about parking, or we like the idea of design standards, or we think focusing on, you know, how do we have catalyst projects over towards Pan? Then we can go back and say, all right, well, here are the things we'd have to do to actually put those into action. Because I agree with you, Cameron, I don't know that I want to, we don't want to come back in another year and have the same session with 57 more ideas. We want to, I think EDAC wants to have things that we can actually sink our own teeth into, to assist the staff that's only got, you know, a couple people. Or, to the question that was raised last year, Mark, I think by you, is, what does he ask? Do we think that we need to double the staff in order to get this, and here's the return on investment you get? That's kind of where I hope that things would go.
One thing I think that has been useful, or is going to be, is figuring out the groupings and what's gravitating north over here. And I personally would like to see those groupings, get them quantified, we can drill into the details of that with staff, to see what the actual ideas of implementing them, so it's not necessarily a per-line item. But I actually would like to come back in a couple of years and say, here's the groups, this is what I've been focused on, this is what we got accomplished. Are these still the right priorities? And get the parties involved to reprioritize, and see that didn't work, drop it off, and introduce a new one.
And I agree with that strongly. I think one of the items that we would see if we did these groupings, is that many of these probably branch out much beyond an EDAC discussion. Because just in things we've heard tonight, some of these are going to go into planning discussions, they're going to go into zoning discussions, they're going to go into transportation, circulation, they might be going to the parks, the park side. Each one of these items has the potential to link elsewhere and create kind of that holistic program. And viewing it only in the context of an EDAC discussion probably doesn't peel back all of the potential value in there.
I want to, and actually, this ultimately leads to an idea about an item that I wouldn't mind proposing that we rate, but I know Matt said he had one too, so I'll hold on to mine before, so give him a chance to put it first. I just want to raise a note of caution, that, that we could end up spending an awful lot of time, we could end up so that almost all of our energies and efforts are spent on thinking and planning, and not doing. And, and just, for what it's worth, my perception is, I'm not trying to be critical about this, my perception is, historically, as an organization, we have spent more time thinking and planning than doing, in this area. And I think because a lot of economic development, from what I've seen, is kind of unexpected, opportunities just come up, you have to concentrate more on the doing, to sort of generate the opportunities, and then working on whichever ones happen to come forward. So, I just want to raise a note of caution, when things start getting big, it's like, I understand exactly what you're saying, Keith, but I'm kind of like, oh my God, if I wanted to kill something, that's exactly what I would do. And I know it's not what you're trying to do, but that's how I would kill it. I'd connect it to the cosmic all, and then nothing would ever happen. You'd just create reports, and they'd be up on the shelf, and we'd say, okay, now what?
All right, let's, let's try something here. Why don't we first add the new ideas, and then what we could do is see which of these you think are categories, and try to make notes of those broadly. And then if there are any hot topics we want to note, as like, those are burning issues, we want to get on them. And then we'll see what that snapshot starts to look like. Is that okay as a way to go? I just want to make sure we're all working the same process at the same point in time. If that's okay, let's add the new ideas. And Matt, you had one, then, Mark?
And it's maybe a new idea. I know, I'll throw it out this way, when Al and Jeff, and I think Mark was with us at the time, Mark Sawicki, we went over to, what's it called, E3?
L3.
L3, yeah. And one of the things, when we were in that conference room, it seemed to me, one of the questions came up was connecting employees during their lunch break, or whatever, to our parks and rec department. In other words, on the east side, there's very little opportunity to go out and get a quick 40-minute outdoor time, exercise, whatever, because we don't have much over there. But trying to think of some way that we could, you know, without actually building a park or something, but doing something that we could work with these big companies that we've got, we've got a few big companies in town, and even smaller employers, to create opportunities for their employees, to have break time at, you know, some kind of facility of the city, to meet their needs in that regard somehow or another.
Okay. And then, Mark, you had one to add?
Yeah. We should, let me just think for a second. We should spend more time doing economic development than planning economic development. Other places I've worked have called that, we should have a bias for action.
So, let's rate these, and we'll go to the categories. So, this one is, and I may not have this right, connecting employees during lunch breaks to park and rec department, allow some quick outdoor time, consider ways without specifically building something, and work with big companies to create opportunities. So, how would you rate the spirit of that idea? And then, and this one is the kind of strategy of a bias for action. So, looking at these top-rated ones, let's make a list of the general themes or categories, so anybody can comment. So, one is South Laurel Development, does that sound like a category? Okay, I'm just going to make a note here. So, what's the next big category, looking down this list, that anybody sees?
East side in general.
East side, yeah. How'd you phrase that, Matt?
The east side in general.
East side in general, yeah.
Concentration, not east side.
South Laurel Development, east side in general, concentration?
Just because it's the top. El Camino, we're splitting it out by geography.
So, we should --
Like a separate thing than South Laurel.
So, we should call it El Camino?
I think there are three that I see, there's South Laurel, there's El Camino, and there's east side.
And downtown.
And El Camino, we just --
They just come up in the top.
What did you say, Jeff?
Downtown.
Downtown.
And the El Camino one, we just call El Camino? And everybody knows what that means?
Yeah.
Okay. And then there's a downtown category?
Do we have a, do we have a theme running through a number of those about improving circulation, shuttles, traffic flow?
Yeah, I think there's a parking and transportation.
Parking, yeah. Maybe those don't all fit together, but it seems to me that we're sort of wrestling with this, how do we make stuff happen more fluidly?
It's a transportation category.
Yeah.
Yeah, it definitely seems like transportation. There also seems like there's a business outreach category.
Yeah, there's a couple of those.
With the transportation one, do we want to call it improving circulation, or parking, or just transportation in general? Because here, here's a struggle here. If you theme something too high, you'll miss some key specific that maybe is rich and important and critical.
I like the first thing you said, you said, I think, circulation and parking.
You call increasing circulation and parking?
Yeah. If I had to just pick a simple one, that's just me.
Interestingly, if we're going to work on South Laurel, if we're going to develop South Laurel, we're going to have to have parking.
We're all going to park at your house. Good luck.
So, so the broad categories I have, unless you see another one, South Laurel Development, east side in general, concentration, El Camino, downtown, improving circulation and parking, and business outreach. Okay, so if those are the six themes, then a question is, do you want to compare them to each other to see which one you think is more important? So, for instance, it would say, is South Laurel Development more important than east side, or are they about the same? Or is that not helpful for a ranking?
Actually, I think personally, that one, I think would be an interesting one to rank.
Before you move on to that, though, I don't want to lose in the top five, we have an education one. That was high enough, it doesn't fit.
Actually, there are several things that don't fit. I mean, I hope that we're not like throwing out all, all the things that don't fit. I think you're just looking for general themes.
You know, we want to walk away from this meeting with some kind of appropriately-ranked or prioritized list, so that you can take action. So, it's really what makes sense to you to not lose, or where we want to compare. If you see another item up there that's not a big theme, but we want to compare it to the themes, let's put it down. So, education, and should we say education, is that just a general theme, or a specific one there that?
Is that a potential use or application on the east side elements specifically? I mean, so if we talk about education, we're talking about education across and throughout the city in all elements, or is it geared specifically because we were attaching it to the east side expertise?
I'm actually going off of numbered 18, the fifth one down, which is St. Carlos to be connected with educational opportunities. It's distinct from --
Well, that was not, and it was the, the specific business category.
Please, you have another one?
No, I have an objection.
Okay, I just want to, excuse me one second. I just want to make sure we're all, one person talking at a time, so we don't miss key points.
So, I'm objecting to the process, because I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. The way I look at this meeting going on is, we throw this stuff back at staff, that we might be kicking something out, that they, they look at this list, and they go, well, this is easily done, we can do this, doesn't fit into one of your categories, but, you know, and if we're looking for action, there's the action over there, for the most part. So, let, you know, give them a crack at it, and like I said, let's have another meeting after they've had a look, an opportunity to digest this, and interpret it, and come back at us with what they think. I think we're, we're over-managing this right now.
To that point, I think there is another category, but we've kind of parsed this a little bit in geographic terms, as we've talked right now. But one very large theme would be the creation of municipal infrastructure in support of economic development, whether we're talking about parking structures, or stormwater collection systems to decrease flooding, you know, I mean, those types of things are, you know, they shine through in different geographic categories that we've parsed them, but overall, that, that seems to me to be a very big overarching thing, and something that the city, and the city alone, would be able to influence in economic development in terms of providing that key infrastructure. How important is that, that we invest in that infrastructure, whatever the priority is in the future?
Mark, just one more comment? Mark, just one more comment?
Sure.
Is, if, another way, another approach to what I'm talking about would be simply to have a category that kind of plays on what you said about, you know, are we going to have a bias towards action or not? And one of the categories could be, especially after staff's given it a look, some, things that are more actionable than others. We could do that one tomorrow. And it would be nice to know what those are, and if it means it gets some kind of priority, at least initially, immediately, then that's a category.
So-
Because at some point, these things seem to be parsed between short term and long term, right? Some of these may be on the list three years from now. They still retain their importance, but it is, it's a longer trip to get there.
If I may, I agree that we can get the actionable stuff. There's things that are pretty granular that we can actually get to pretty soon. But there's also, due to limited bandwidth, only so much we can focus on even figuring out what the programs are and what we want to focus on. So given the geographic spread, you can't say, let's work on things to improve South Laurel and East Side and El Camino. That's a little too much. So we're kind of looking for feedback from councilists to which should we focus on first. Reasonably, we can't do more than probably one of those.
Well, you know, just off the top of my head, this gets back to something that you mentioned a few minutes ago, Josh, that I had talked about last year, which is, there's another way of looking at this, which is that if EDAC and staff working together came back and said, well, with existing resources, we could do one of these things. If you give us two more people, we could do three of these things. Here's what it would cost to get those kind of people. I'm not, you know, trying to prejudge what the council would do, but to me, that's important information for the council to have, to make an intelligent decision about resource allocation, which is ultimately our biggest responsibility, or one of our big responsibilities. I also didn't want to chime in. I think, Matt, I may not agree with all of the specifics and the details, but I think you have a really good point. I agree with you on, I see us at a point where we almost ought to hand this off to staff and EDAC and have them chew on it and bring it back. Smaller group, individuals actually looking at it, trying to see how pieces fit together, what things can be done easily, what are the trade-offs involved?
Well, there's a choice here. I mean, one thing is to end and hand it to staff. Another is, do you want to direct them any further on what you feel the priorities are? Or is this close enough?
And with, I did say a few minutes ago, for me, of the two themes that we identified, South Laurel Development and East Side Evolution is the way I was thinking of it. I don't view those as necessarily an either-or, but I wouldn't mind seeing what the group's sort of sense of priority is about which one of those two is more important, because I think the relative level of importance would guide, would guide the subsequent discussion about what ought we to be working on next, and what are the priorities.
There's another approach that can be taken, and that's, you know, overlay maps, where you take subjects and you put them down, and where you see overlay between two categories, like, I don't know, I'm trying to think of an example, but like, you know, circulation and parking. And then you've got, you know, South Laurel, circulation and parking. So now, you've got something that's bigger, you've got something that's more specific, but you have an overlay, so that shows an intensity, right? It shows, so that's must have some priority because of that. And you might have something else that's just out there floating all by itself, so given limited resources, it might have to stand alone, unless it looks like it's something that's really, really important.
Would there be any interest in answering the question, what is the group's priority? Are projects more important than programs, or are programs more important than projects? I think a lot of the, I think a lot of the programs, the outreach to businesses, understanding their issues, the exit interview type stuff, I think of that as kind of intelligence gathering, you know, for the council members that have been on those meetings, you know, nine times out of 10, you hear a lot of the same things, particularly for companies leaving town. They're not doing that lightly, and oftentimes, they've really looked hard to try to stay here, but there's, you know, very specialized limitations that, you know, we're never going to be able to address, certainly in a short period of time, to keep that specific company. You know, but you can start to generate themes that might influence long-term land use decisions in the community. You know, that's one set of priorities. It tends to be, you know, staff-intensive, a lot of legwork with a very slow burn on return, as opposed to, you know, hey, here's $5 million, build this thing because it's going to attract a lot of additional investment, or, you know, is it kind of a catalyst to an area? Those are two very different priorities. And, you know, I'm not suggesting that you would only focus on one or the other, but I'm just curious how the group might-
And maybe another way to rephrase it is, you know, it's basically working within the existing infrastructure and property stock versus trying to change, you know, do a project either to change the infrastructure, build a parking garage, expand Holly Street, or build a new office building, you know, or do something like that, you know. Which is, you know, when we were on EDAC, there was a lot of conversation about basically hustling and trying to get new businesses into existing buildings and trying to use staff resources essentially as grease on the wheels to try to make that happen. And I don't, I don't know that we can point to any successes there, at least none that I remember. Nobody said, oh, hey, such-and-such business moved in, and it was because the city brokered some deal to make it happen, at least not in my memory.
I think the most notable probably would be Trader Joe's.
Uh-huh. And that was how long ago?
It was a while ago now.
B and Knees also.
Oh, right, yeah.
But, you know, we can call a lot of businesses, and we talk to businesses every day, and whenever we say, come to San Carlos, we want you here, they say, where are you going to put me?
Right, exactly, yeah. So I'm with you on that.
Yeah, so that's the difficulty, is it's a frustration for us, too, because we have an older building stock.
Yeah.
And what we've heard from the brokers in the marketplace is, you know, what do you want to be? Do you want to be an incubator? Do you want to, you know, attract bigger companies, or, you know, and both are good. So what do you want to be? And so the difficulty for staff is, you know, you know, how do we, how do we help things along, too? And so the more direction that we can be provided with, the better.
Well, I mean, I guess, and I don't mean to sidetrack us, but I guess, the question to you is, Al, what do you think we should be? You know, as a community development director, like, where do you think the biggest opportunities are for us?
I think that we have a tremendous opportunity in the mid-plate business office buildings on the east side, and, and I think that we have a great building and construction industry that we shouldn't set aside, and we should still concentrate on that, because it's a great industry, and the Bay Area is going to continue to grow and construct for years to come. And we're a hub of activity that, and we need to build and grow that hub. But on the other hand, I think that we should look at our, again, attracting smaller to mid-sized businesses and keeping the ones we have. We have some outstanding businesses. We, how are we going to keep them? That's what they're telling us. We're looking around now because we're growing so fast, and we need, we need to facilitate and incentivize a way for them to stay in our community. And I think we can do that. I think we can. So that's where I see the opportunities. I think there's a few other synergies and opportunities throughout the community, but those are the two sort of key areas. Of course, downtown. South Laurel is great, but it's, I mean, if you're talking about changing things and generating resources for the community to build more infrastructure and make us a better community, put money into parks and stuff, you need to generate that revenue.
And I would just add one thing to that, diversification. I think that's one of the secrets to our success thus far in our economy here in San Carlos, is that we have a very diverse economic base. And I, to me, anyway, maintaining diversity in that economic base, I think, is critical for this community moving forward, that it, you know, that it not, this would, because of the size of our community, becoming a company town could have a potentially devastating effect. And one of the reasons why we've tended to weather economic recessions fairly well here in San Carlos is because our economy is so diverse that while, you know, a sector may take a significant hit, hotels, for example, we're not a hotel economy, or the building industry, for example. Well, you know, we do have some hotels. There's, there's a lot going on here that's provided a very stable base, but doesn't necessarily lend itself to any one giant in town.
I'd like to follow up on something Al said, that, you know, we're trying to keep these businesses here and attract the small and medium size. It seems to me that a big part of that is zoning. I mean, haven't we done something recently to improve our flexibility in zoning? And is that something that we should just continue to focus on? Because if we change the zoning appropriately, don't we just sort of prime that engine?
Yes, I think that's right. And we have changed our zoning, and in fact, we're going to bring some more changes to the city council in the next couple of months that will further grease the wheels for change and keeping our businesses in town. So I think that, yeah, you're right. A lot of it's zoning, but we have good zoning. And we're, I think we're making it better and to make those things happen occur more frequently.
Because when I look at zoning, I think what we've done in the last 10 years, and I think a lot of it's related to zoning.
Yeah.
Palo Alto Medical, we got the Hotel, Hamph, Wheeler. I think that's, you know, those are the, those are all big deals, all big projects, related to zoning.
There was, there's another critical aspect to it, which I didn't appreciate before joining the council, which is the zoning is not and rarely can ever be enough, because the other thing you have to have is the property consolidation. All those projects you just mentioned?
Yeah.
Wheeler, the city through the RDA consolidated the properties. Hamph, I'm not, I guess it was the RDA, again, consolidated the properties. The, when businesses are looking for a place to grow and expand, I mean, Al, we've talked about this a lot in many circumstances, the problem they run into is not that the zoning doesn't support it, it's the fact that the area that they want to expand into is owned by six different people, none of whom are interested in selling, okay? And so they're like, well, what can we do? Well, the answer is, unless the city were to come in and buy stuff, which is not always possible to do, they leave. And, and we've had long-term discussions that, to me, I don't know what, I have no idea what an answer is, but, but if somebody could come up with some creative thinking about how we encourage, we're talking about incentivizing, incentivize property consolidation. That's the other piece that we need to have happen. We just don't know how to do that yet.
And actually, we are doing it. We're on the cutting edge, I think, as a, as a city in the state of California with the Landmark Project. So as a city, we've stepped in to facilitate change and incent, you know, make change happen. And so with redevelopment, we lost our tools to be able to do that as a community. So the Strategic Acquisition Reserve Fund was a really, it was really great forethought to have that, and we're able to use it where other cities, they didn't think ahead. They just, you know, they just didn't. So we're setting, we're actually setting the standard for the kind of tools that we need as a community. So that's a, I guess, a big push as a director for those kinds of tools, where we can actually effectuate change and bring you these ideas and ask you, hey, do you agree? We think this is a great idea. We should invest in this. Does EDAC agree, and does council agree that we should invest in this and make this change happen?
I'll grant you that we are being, we are being creative in that. The point I wanted to make, and not to take anything away from it, but the point I wanted to make is a little different. Even there, by, we had to be prepared to have the resources, and actually, a big chunk of the resources was simply our willingness to engage in lease financing, okay? It was the Strategic Property Acquisition Reserve, although that helped. We had to be prepared to step in, but it was still fundamentally reactive, okay? The question I'm raising is, is there a way to create incentives that cause more existing property owners to say, hey, yes, I'd like to sell out and consolidate, so I can be happy, and somebody else could come in and be happy and own a bigger piece of property? And that, I don't know how we do, and that, I don't see that we've actually, I don't know that anybody has made much progress on, other than sort of waiting for, like what happened with Landmark, where a bunch of people said, okay, we want to sell, and we stepped in and said, well, we'll take it off your hands.
And I think that's maybe something that ought to be put up as a, you know, something that you should look at and think about voting on, because there are ways, there are tools, and we could bring those forward. But I guess we need to know if that's of interest to the whole group. So it'd be nice to hear whether the group is interested in doing that. Would you agree, Jeff, on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, there are some tools, and there are other decisions, other land use decisions that the city council could make to effectuate that, or allow the private sectors, essentially what we're talking about, to make those types of investments. And a lot of that's going to have to do with density, you know, the size of the development, you know, whether you're talking residential or commercial, that you're allowing to go in, because that density equates to, you know, the return on investment that the private sector is going to get on acquiring the dirt, putting the dirt together. And the bigger development they can build, you know, the more they're going to be willing to spend those bucks and take that time in consolidating property, because it's a major challenge. We know, because we've probably, we've probably done it more than anybody or any developer in the city attempted to consolidate property, to then put back into, you know, private sector hands, but with a larger footprint.
So we have about 10 minutes, unless we want to take more time. So why don't we do a couple of things? One is we put this idea in, which is incentivize property consolidation, look into ways to make more of this happen. So is this something you'd agree to or not, or something for the staff to look into?
I think this is perhaps a wording discussion, only from my perspective. I would have a bit of a negative reaction to that wording. I would think a little bit differently if it was about creating or consolidating parcels that meet what we expect to be the gaps in our, in our portfolio within the city. It's not, I would think one way about trying to get people to sell out. I would think another about trying to create larger parcels that have broader use.
Keith, your issue is the word incentivize?
It's getting owners to sell out. To me, that's a private market discussion.
Yeah.
They can, they can keep it or not it as they wish, and I don't want to interfere with that. But I do see the city has a shortage in, as Mark was saying, the mid-plate arena. And to me, the positive aspect is creating an element for that if, if the free-market economy wants to participate in that discussion.
So I took out the sell-out?
I'm sorry?
Create the atmosphere.
Exactly, create the atmosphere, allow that to happen.
Is this wording okay, exclusive of the spell check, which we'll fix later? Create or consolidate parcels to meter fill gaps in our portfolio, larger parcels with broader use?
Yes, I'd be fine with that.
So why don't we do a quick rating of this one for the council and commission's perspective? And, thank you. So we have, that one's way up there. So Mark had a request, looking at these categories, A through H, I just put the major categories there. Could we do this? We don't want to just vote just for, you know, the voting sake. That's just annoying and doesn't give you anything. But looking at A to H, if you each had to pick two, this is just to see what happens, if you each had to pick two to try to offer a little bit of guidance for the staff, this is okay, what two would you each pick? So think for a moment, let's say, you know, Josh says A and E, you don't have to say them yet. I'm just going to go down the list, and if you're going to pick A, just raise your hand high, and I'm just going to put the number there. And this is for Mark, and we'll see if this is useful or not. And if it's not, we won't use it as input. So has everybody got the two where they believe the city should most focus on economic development? And you only get two?
Not, not quite there.
Not quite, okay. And stick to your two, no matter what others say. It's just an impression, not a decision.
And under H, we're going with the reworded H, right?
H is reworded, right, to, yeah, to, for our portfolio, I'll just put- H is reworded, right, to, yeah, to, for our portfolio, I'll just board. And these notes are going to go to Ades and Al, and they'll refine them and, you know.
By the way, just one point of, and not that I necessarily disagree with it, but item G was one that Jeff proposed that we actually never voted on.
Okay. Should we just take that one out, or vote on it?
No, 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 I'm, I'm just pointing out that that's something that we-
I'd like, I'd like to vote on it.
Then maybe we want to vote on that first. I'm, I don't know.
I, I would love to vote on it.
Well, why don't we put that in and, and give a quick ranking, if that's a wish?
Jeff, could you do a bit of explaining on that one, too?
This is the creation of infrastructure. Really, how, how important does the group feel that the city's investment in the creation of municipal infrastructure is in support of economic development?
What would an example of that be beyond a parking structure?
Storm drain systems, you know, solving flooding problems, sewer capacity.
Would a, would a high-speed fiber optic system fall into that?
High-speed fiber optic system, network support, roadway improvements-
So it's pretty broad.
Connections to interstate, you know, all, those are things that only we can do, right, as a city, where they're, they're never going to be done by the practice.
Well, actually, by example, lots of people can do. We just aren't able to do it as well.
All right, so let's do a quick rating on this one, creation of the municipal infrastructure. Storm drain, flooding, fiber optics, roadway, connections. Five strongly agreed, down to one. Thank you. So that one's up there.
Okay, Jeff, you get to have your idea on the other page.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
I didn't want you to think you could get away with that, please looping it in there.
So A through H, has everybody got the two? They would, they lean towards thinking of the city. With all these criteria, quality of life, employment, revenues, legacy, most important, how many of you would say one of my votes would be on A? One, thank you. How many would you say B? One, two, three, four, thank you. C, downtown. D, improve circulation and parking. One, two, three, four, thank you. E, business outreach? One. F, educational opportunities? One, two.
That was your idea. Come on, raise your hand.
C, creation of municipal infrastructure in support of economic development. One, two, three. And four, incentivize property consolidation. One, two, three. Any comments on this potential guidance?
There's a lot of redundancy.
I see D and G as being somewhat together.
Yeah, and actually, like-
I agree.
B and H, and-
Right.
A and H, and-
There's a lot of overlap. But it still may be useful.
So, and A would go to H?
Well, not, not necessarily. Is one, H is a strategy, A and B are geographies, C is geography, and, but-
I sort of see D and G as somebody put up there, they're kind of-
Yeah, they're the same.
So maybe A.
Right.
I'm not going to change the votes, I'm just putting a note there that says these could be similar. So here's the question, it's 8:57. We have a long list, roughly rated, with all the ideas you could possibly have imagined, at least up to this point in time. You have an indication of strategy, rather, categories, and where some of the priority may be. Would you like to do something else tonight? Is this enough, or do we, is there some key process point that would be useful before it goes to staff for scenarios and ideas?
Is that a trick question?
I'm, I'm fine with what we've accomplished tonight, and like Matt and I were talking about from two slightly different angles, I think now's the time, actually, to have a smaller group of people kind of pour through all this stuff, think about it, and come back with some more specific proposals. I was actually struck by, I, personally, I found one of the more interesting parts, pardon me, one of the more engaging parts of, of tonight's discussion was, was when you started going, Al, into all the things that we could do, and Jeff was talking about the things we could do. Because it, to me, it was starting to synthesize some of this other stuff and actually come back with a plan.
Great.
Rather than try to create the plan in the group.
And we can do that, yeah. We can, if, so, I'm hearing that you'd like to have another meeting where this staff has a chance to synthesize the information, come back with some more ideas about what we heard, and maybe if we can merge things together and prioritize a little more.
And maybe run it by EDAC first, or do it lightly?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, that's sort of whatever you think works best.
Okay.
You know, I think one of my observations here that I think has been very helpful was actually the creation of our list of categories that we, that you guys just kind of voted on, because, and I, I understand there's some overlap, and you can debate what's in this category or that. But those categories, actually, I feel more comfortable, because they match up a lot with more of the dialogue and conversations that we've had with the groups, both as the individual council and EDAC, and the individual members in the room. Starts to make a little bit more sense to me about what the priorities are. So I'd be excited to see EDAC and the staff do a little bit more analysis on what we've done tonight, and then just talk about next steps to get the group back together, maybe in the late summer.
All right, good. Anybody have any other last-minute comments, or last comments? Well, thank you very much for, actually, whose was the brainstorm to put this sort of process together, this approach? Is that, that you?
I would say it was our whole EDAC group.
I liked it. You want to take credit for it, I'm just kidding. It was the whole group. Well, good. I'm glad, I'm glad that, that you guys decided to try something a little different, and I think that was useful.
That's good.
Thank you, Frank.
You bet.
Yes, thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
That was so, I love the whole thing.